All right, I would like to call to order the March 10th meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. Would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks again for coming. Molly, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Palmer.
Here.
Lewis here. Severson?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here. All right, our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We can begin by doing the approval of the adjustments, announcements in court, approval of the agenda, excuse me. Can I have a motion to move that forward?
No motion.
Molly?
Second.
John, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Our announcements, on March 17th, Tuesday at 5:30, we have a school board work session here in the community room. On March 24th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. March 27th, which is a Friday, there's no school for a grading day. April 9th and 10th, there's also no school. April 14th, at two, which is a Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we have another regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Madam Chair and members, there are no correspondence at this time.
All right, thanks. Now is the time where we do citizen employee representatives. So at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The school board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on a request presented at this time. Do we have anyone who came? All right, great, keepin' on, keepin' on. We're gonna now ask, I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report, the minutes of the January 7th organizational meeting, the January 7th special call meeting, work session Friday, sorry, February 11th to 25th, regular school board meeting, and February 18th, school board sessions. It also has the mid-year lane changes and the treasurer's reports for November and December of 2019.
Second.
Okay, that was a lot. That was triple, triple whammy.
Lauren and John.
Lauren and John, I'll give it to Lauren and John. Don's looking at me like somebody has to be official. Thank you, Don, for keeping us all on the right. Any discussion on that?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, great. Let's move on to reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. So, let's begin with Laura down there. All lonely out on the end, we won't include you.
Yeah, I'm lonely down here, kinda lonely on this end, so. Well, I was able to attend the conferences over at Valley View. Very, 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 very well organized. It was really a lovely time. Got to see some great videos that the kids had done in media arts. They had that up on the screen. That was really exciting to see. And I also attended the conferences also over at Columbia Academy, again, also extremely well organized. We got right in, right out, and it was, it was just awesome. I also attended the 9/16 board meeting, monthly board meeting, and some items of interest is we had a presentation on a new data system that they're working on. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to get some real-time data on behaviors within their classrooms and being able to track things almost in real time. So the, the ideas of some of these students that have, have some of these triggers, they're trying to find out if it's a certain times a day or certain times of the week, and they wanna be able to use that to be able to, to help the students. They gave us a brief presentation on one case where they kind of figured out what was going on with the behavior, and they simply made a simple change and the child was able to turn around. But they wouldn't have been able to do that had they not had the data. And they're looking at, at, with this new data system and being able to help in, in bringing students back in, to transition back into the schools by being able to maintain, maintain that tracking through the course. So they're doing a pilot with a, with a couple of students now that are in transition. So that was one thing. The other one was, as well, is we actually had a wonderful presentation from the Career and Tech out in, that's part of 9/16, so that's your, your technical college, and we had some students who were doing things like, you know, auto mechanics, and there's one student who actually was in ER, wants to be a paramedic, and was able to do a ride along with a St. Paul, or Maple, it was the Maplewood Police Fire Department, and be able to actually assist with that. And she was really excited. She said this is exactly what she wants to do, and that's some of the opportunities that our students have as well, although Century College is a little far for a lot of our students to get to. So I think that should probably, oh, and Metro Heights, we're looking at an expansion over there. The, the, there is some space that's available, but the Metro Heights is, they're, we're starting to see like 200 students that are being served in a day, and there's really just not quite enough room, and they wanna be able to bring in things like, like counselors and things like that. So they're gonna do some expansion, and we got a pretty good deal as well on the space because it's ju, it's literally what we're already paying, we're just expansion, expanding, so the square footage price is still the same. So, and I think that'll do it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, it was a lot, yeah.
Those board meetings get you a lot of info. All right, Molly?
Yeah, mine was much quieter. I attended Academic Honors Night at Columbia Academy, which was, again, well done, as well as conferences at the same school. And then I attended some boys and girls varsity basketball games. Their seasons have ended, but they had a lot of good things going this year. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
John?
I don't think the band concert was after our last meeting, right?
I wrote it down, but I think it was after.
I was trying to remember what it was. Anyway, had an opportunity to attend the high school band concert. They actually performed in their new band room, partially because the PAC is not done, but it actually, it went really, really well. There was enough space for the people, and the kids did an amazing job, as always. I had an opportunity to read at Valley View, representing as a school board, twice, because my timing wasn't so good on the first one, apparently. Spent too much time in one of my classrooms and I missed one of the other classes, so I went back a second time, but got to read to a couple second grade classrooms and then a kindergarten classroom, so always just a lot of fun. Conferences here at the high school this last week, and then Hall and I were the school board members representing for the listening session at the high school. We did not have any formal sit-down, fill-out paperwork stuff. We did have a couple people come up and talk, ask a couple questions about some things that were pretty perfunctory as far as being able to respond to them. So there's no follow-up that was necessary for administration, so, and that's it.
All right, awesome. Lauren?
All right, since our last meeting, it seems like it was forever ago, but I think we had the work session since then. Also, like the other day, I attended the conferences at Columbia Academy, so thanks to the staff who gave their time for that great attendance as well. And like Molly, I attended the Columbia Academy Academic Honors Night, always a great event. They do such a good job over there. And it was neat to see the Marimba Band 2.0, so the second generation of the Marimba Band. They are just as amazing as the first generation. So, did a really nice job there. Also, I had the opportunity to read at Valley View for I Love to Read Month, and if you ever have a bad day, just go read for the kids at the school. So, I was so thrilled that Sherri Allison set that up and the I Love to Read Month. I got to read to first and second graders, and I read them one of my favorite books, so maybe it was more fun for me than them. I don't know, but we had a really good time. Also had the listening session with Laura over at Valley View. I feel like I'm just repeating everything else everybody else has done, but again, really well done over there. We didn't have people who really came up to talk to us so much like, like you guys did, but feedback was that, you know, the staff really liked having us there, that the opportunity was there, got, really gave us an opportunity to see what was going on in the schools. And like Laura said, the media arts display that they had, it was so neat to see what those kids were able to put together, so that was pretty cool. I also had several conversations with community members and with Superintendent Kelly, so thank you for that, and that would be it for me.
All right, similar, but just a couple of you were pretty busy. In addition to having conversations with community members, I was able to go to the swim sections and watch the boys compete in their last meets of the year, which was fun. We had some kids and teams very close to the state tournament, so it was a little excruciating but fun and hopeful for the future. I was at the band concert, and I, in addition to what John said, it was, the kids were just really proud, and I even think the teachers, really proud to show off the new space. And I brought my parents, and they were like, ooh, this is nut, you know, like, they were impressed, and it, it feels like a good step moving forward to continue to improve our spaces and offer more opportunities for kids. So it was exciting to see. It's an unintended consequence of the PAC not being done, but I think it was a good one in this case. And so, really enjoyed that. Hall and I were at conferences at North Park on the 20th of February for a listening session. We did have people stop by. Because we were in the lobby, they couldn't help but kind of stop by because they had to pass us, and I'm chatty. So, they could, they kinda got stuck in a couple cases, but I did meet a lot of people, and I have to thank Nathan Meyer for every time he made an announcement for people to transition to their next conference. He mentioned that I was in the lobby taking selfies with any interested parents. So, I did get some business, so it was, that was fun, but nothing to report back on. It was more just conversations, questions, introductions, so. And I think that's it for me. Superintendent Kelly?
Madam Chair and members, I do have a report tonight. I attended the AMSD Board of Directors meeting, and the major focus of that meeting was on the proposed constitutional change, the Minnesota Constitutional Change, proposed by retired Justice Alan Page and President and CEO Neil Keshkari of the Federal Reserve Board, proposing that we change the Constitution from how it presently reads, which is Uniform and General System of Public Schools, to equal right to quality public education. And so, they presented the theory of the case. There were lots of questions about it, and then from there, it went down, they all went down to the hearing. The Senate heard the bill. We're not quite sure if the bill has legs this year, but if, if it does, it would have to be something that voters would have to vote on in, on the ballot. And so, not sure if it had a House hearing. I will put additional information on that in the superintendent update this week. We had a delightful meeting, at least it was delightful on our part, with the City of Columbia Heights Police and Fire Chiefs to exchange some thoughts and strategies and plans for pandemic preparedness planning. And that was very, very helpful. We exchanged ideas and strategies on what we're doing with our plans. And then, later this week, we're meeting again, and we will also be sending out some joint communiques through our, to our parents, our stakeholders, from the City of Columbia Heights. And so, we really appreciate working on that collaboration together. The city plan was really something to emulate from the standpoint of when you're in the middle of planning. We have our H1 and 1 Plan, and we have our internal communications plans, but it's nice to see what the community is doing that supports the schools. So, we're modeling some of the things that are already in the plan, so we're not replicating or going in different directions. So that was very helpful, thank you. We have a district pandemic, pandemic team that continues to be in contact with the CDC, MD, the Minnesota Department of Education, the Minnesota Department of Health, Anoka County, on an ongoing basis regarding actual COVID-19. And they provide us updates, and that's usually gonna be on Wednesdays from now on. So, we already sent out one update to our community stakeholders in the schools, and what we'd like to do is get on a regular basis, so as we learn things, we will be sending it out through our, all of our social media and our parent communications strands. And that might be regulations, it might be strategies, or it might be an alert. And so, the Communications Department is, is also working on making sure things even get on Instagram, as far as helpful, helpful tips. As things evolve, we really wanna keep stakeholders involved because really, there's not a cure for this right now, but the schools can slow it down through prevention. And we wanna make sure that people are really aware of all the things they can do and some of the things they don't have to do that get out there in the rumor mill. We've already sent out one common message, and when we, when the team gets its refined plan done, and we're gonna review it again multiple times with police and fire, we will bring it to the board and go over some of the external, and I might send you some of the internal things in the update, so that I just want everyone to know in the community that we are thinking about this all the time, and that we do have a plan and we're refining it with the help of stakeholders in the community, at the state, and at the federal level. Local 710 met with their leadership, and we had the Licensed Labor Management Meeting. It's a monthly meeting, and we met on issues of the contract, but we also talked about pandemic preparedness training, just so we could get questions out. And that's the other thing we'd like to do, is have a frequently asked question on the website, which will probably, you'll see probably closer next week, where if people have questions, they can give them to us, and if they are within the purview of the school, we would try to answer them. And then, we had an Executive Construction Committee meeting, and the district is preparing on April 1st, so mark your calendars, that Columbia Heights High School Performing Arts Spaces will have a ribbon cutting ceremony. This will be held at the high school. All are welcome. It will start at 6:00 and go to 7:30. The program will begin at 6:00 and then should not last much more than about 20 minutes. And then what we'd like to do is have a series of self-guided tours to all of the spaces that we've put on in the last year or two, and students performing in each and every one of them. So, I think it's gonna be really a lot of fun, and we'd invite you all to participate if you're watching now, and of course, board members that will be there as well. I continue to meet with individual school board members, and I attended the school board chair meeting prior to this meeting, and I wanna thank all of you for your time.
As, as did we. We just remembered we were there, too. So, thank you for reminding us. All right, I would love to welcome up the Columbia Heights Chief of Police, Lenny Austin. Thanks for coming tonight. He's going to present us with information on the Columbia Heights Police Department and their partnerships.
I will, if I can get this PowerPoint back up here. Hold on just a second.
Elphobrian.
What's that?
I was gonna say, we know a guy who can help you.
Uh-oh, hold on. I thought you hit F5. Hold on here.
All right.
Insert?
Light show.
Oh. From beginning, there we go. How about that? All right, well, before I, before I get started, first of all, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the invitation to come up here and talk a little bit about what's going on at the Columbia Heights Police Department, especially from the partnership perspective, and specifically with the school district. Before I get started, though, I, I do have to take a moment and thank Superintendent Kathy Kelly for all her years of service in the school district, and, and especially with her role as superintendent here. You know, there, there aren't a lot of people that get into positions that, when they get in there, they make some incredible changes to whatever they do and whatever district they're involved in. And I have to say, Superintendent Kelly, that from where I sit, you are certainly leaving the school district in a much better place. And so, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for that. And also, on a personal note, you know, when I took over as chief a couple of years ago, you know, when they hand you the keys, you don't really have a manual, and so, you do rely on, on relationships that you've developed over the years. And I just, you folks may not know this, but Superintendent Kelly was actually, I think, the first person that reached out to me, one to congratulate me, and also two to, to give her, well, I already had her cell phone, but to make sure that she knew that anytime, day or night, if I needed anything, not even specifically school-related, to give her a call. And I gotta tell you, that really meant a lot because, like I said, it can get a little, a little, a little lonely, especially these last couple of years. So, thank you for that, and, and I wish you nothing but the best in your upcoming retirement, so.
Thank you very much.
And then, while Xena's here, I have to congratulate her as well on her appointment as the next superintendent here for the school district. And I just wanna thank the board. You made a great choice here. I've, I've been fortunate to work with Xena over the years, off and on, and, and I gotta tell you, you picked a good one. You really did. And I really look forward to, to the magic that you can bring to the school district. So, and like I said, if you need anything, don't ever hesitate to give us a call. So, thank you. So, with that, I'll go ahead and get started so we can get everyone out of here at a decent time. So, you know, so there's a, there's a lot of things going on at the Police Department. It seems like just when things start to settle down and slow down, we kinda ramp things up in a, in a different direction. I just wanna cover a couple of things that are, that are going on. I'll start with the staffing changes because we have seen some significant changes over the last year, and I'll, I'll get into that a little bit. And then, I'll just kinda go over some of our 2020 youth initiatives, and I'll, I'll kinda go back to a little bit into 2019 as well. And then, I'm gonna just talk briefly about some of our other new programs. They do cover some other partnerships that we work with, both internally with the city, and then also with County Attorney's Office that we'll talk about as well. So, with that, I do have to note that we also have had a couple of retirements at the Police Department. Specifically, I'll, I'll first have to talk about Beth. So Beth O'Brien was one of our records techs, and she was with the city for 35 years. And I believe 33 of those years were with the Police Department. And then, I think most of you know Dale, and Dale also retired this past December after 23 years of service with the Police Department. Dale served in a variety of roles. He was a detective with the Drug Task Force. He worked in investigations in, within the city as well. And he also served as a, as a school liaison officer for just a short period of time, if you recall, during the, after the, when, as Mike McGee was recovering after, after that shooting back in '01. I bring that up because, you know, you don't, you don't replace a 23-year officer, you just simply don't. He, and the thing with Dale, Dale was one of those officers where he is, if you look back on his 23-year career, he's probably been on just about every major incident that has occurred in the last 23 years from a police perspective. And so, he was an incredible officer, he really was, and, and we do miss him, and we wish him nothing but the best. And then lastly, Jake Hilton, who's been with us for about nine years, he's currently assigned to investigations, he's actually leaving us, he is actually, his last day is actually on Friday. He and his family are actually relocating to a much warmer climate. So, good for him, and Jake's a great person, and he's gonna land on his feet wherever he goes. So, with that, we've also done quite a bit of hiring. So, just in the last few months, we've, we've hired four officers. Mitch Weiser, who was, who just actually finished his probationary year just back in January, was sworn in January of last year. Nate Burch was sworn in in August of this past year. Guy Duran was just recently sworn in a month ago, and Madeline, Madeline Zitzelsberger was sworn in just at the end of February. So, currently, both Guy and Madeline are in field training, and they'll be in that, in that role for a couple of months yet before we kick them out on their own. So, and then, once that happens, we're still four officers short. So, we're going to be busy with the new hiring process, and generally, our field training program, the way it's set up and with our staffing, we can usually run two, sometimes three officers through field training at once. So, we're hoping that we can get them on sooner than later. The, the one thing it does take to bring officers on board from the time we post the initial position to the time we bring them on, on board and swear them in on their first day, you know, it can take about three to four months, just simply because of the, the interviews, the background, the drug screening, the psychological, all of that stuff. So, it does take a little bit of time. So, we're gonna be running a little bit, a little bit short in the coming months, but we are moving pretty quickly on this. The city manager has made this a priority, so we're hoping that we can get rolling as soon as possible. Another, some other changes in the, in our civilian parts, Jessica Riquini is our lead records tech who was hired in September of last year, and that's a, that's actually a new position that we created. And it's nice, I think I heard Board Member Palmer talking about new, new computer systems earlier, and we, we implemented a new system a couple of years ago, and the nice thing is Jess actually is, she has several years of experience with this specific system, so it's, it's been great. We've been able to just plug her in, and, and she's been a great resource and a great asset for us. And then, currently, we do have an open records tech position, and we're actually initiating, initiating that hiring process this week. So, we're hoping to get that position filled within the next couple of months as well. So, I just wanna back up to the one thing I, I mentioned with Dale, you don't replace a person like Dale with that many years of experience. And I think it is interesting, if you look at our, our line officers who are assigned to patrol, the, the majority of them have on about three years or less. And, and what I will tell you, it is, it is great to see that new energy there, and to see those young officers out there doing, working hard and, and really starting their career. So, it's been great. The nice thing, too, is we can really take the time and mold and shape them into the, into the officers that we want them to be. And so, that's, that's been a great thing for us to do. I'm not gonna lie, it's also, there's also some challenges bringing those new officers on, but it's been, it's actually been, been a lot of fun to see, to see the new blood there. So, I just wanted to touch base, you know, one thing worth, with, with working with the school district is close, and I'll, I'll just take a minute. I was, I was fortunate to spend the summer out east at the FBI National Academy, and, and we talked a lot about schools and working with schools and working, and working closely with partnerships. And, you know, I think there were, I think there were 256 officers in my class. And what I can tell you is just based on, on speaking with a lot of the classmates that I met out there, this partnership specifically between the school district and the Police Department, there is, there is not many out there that are like that. And, and I just can't thank you folks enough for allowing us to do all of this. And this isn't even a complete list. This is, this is just a portion of what we, what we're, what we're doing, and, and I just, these are just some of the highlights. And, and like I said, based on, on some of the conversations that we've had, where, that I had out east, this, there was, there were, it was nice to see that some of the, some of my classmates were taking some notes because they wanted to bring some of this back to their, their individual departments as well. And really, you know, there's, there's many reasons that we do this. I think the most important is, it's, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful way for us to work with students and work with kids on a completely different level. And, and what I can tell you, you know, if you look at, like, for example, I've, I've been involved in the Big Brothers Program for quite a few years now, and, and, you know, you walk into the, into the Highland where my little is at, and, you know, you walk in and you, the kids don't even see you as a police officer anymore. That, that barrier broke down years ago, and that is exactly what we're trying to accomplish. And, and like I said, thank you for that because it really does, as time goes on, it does make our job so much easier when we don't have to break that barrier initially when we're out on, on the street on a, on a call. So, like I said, this, this really, you know, we probably get more out of it than you folks get out of it. So, so thank you so much for allowing us to do that. I do wanna just touch base on a couple of things, that newer programs that we're doing, specifically the Cuts With a Cop, which we are, which we finished up this second year, that we partnered with the Moller Barber School, which has now moved up into Fridley. That continues to be, you know, I was, I was a little skeptical on that, and that's really been a great, a great program that we've had. The, the barber school's been great. They, they, they offer free haircuts for a back-to, as a back-to-school thing, and, and it's a great training opportunity for the students that are there, and it's been just fantastic. The, the officers that participate in that, they've, they've really enjoyed it, and it's been, it's been a lot of fun. JP gets a definite cut rate with his, with his hairstyle. I shouldn't talk too much, but, but JP especially. So, and then, and then the other thing, and I'll just, I, I did pull a few photos because we just had this last week, but our Cooking With a Cop's program, we started this last year, and this photo was actually taken last year. And, and again, we, when we did this, and this is the, the interesting thing about, you know, going back to this, we've been involved in a lot of this, these programs for several years now. And it's, we're really starting to see things pay off because actually, the girls softball team actually approached JP last year. team actually approached JP last year and said, you know, you folks are, you folks are, you guys are always doing basketball and that type of thing with the guys, but you're not doing anything with the girls. And so why, why can't we do something, you know, with you guys? And so they actually came up with this. And, and we thought, well, let's give it a shot. And, and so it was great. And like I said, walking into this, you know, I was one of the judges, so I had the easy part. I didn't know what to expect, but I got to tell you, that's just one of the dishes that they made. And the interesting thing is they, they, they only had an hour to do this. And, and for them, and some of these, some of these, some of these kids, you know, they've never even seen a mixer like, you know, one of the standalone mixers like that. So, some of this was pretty new territory for them and they just, it's one, I'll tell you that, you know, when it comes to athletics and that type of thing, those kids that are drawn to that, they're all very competitive. I don't care if it's a boy or a girl. And these girls were ultra-competitive and they, they really put out some awesome dishes. And same with this year. This was, this past year, and this was a, it was dessert-based this year. And, and I, I got to tell you, I didn't need to eat sweets for a few days after that. But they did a great, great job. And I believe it was actually Team Four that made those Snicker bars that, that won it this past year. And like I said, they did a, they did a great job. And, and again, this was just a great thing for us to do. And, and like I said, they're on a time crunch, so it's pretty fantastic. One thing to note, I, I thought it was interesting, so, so Jessica, that I talked about, our lead records tech, and then Officer Duran, their previous careers are, are unique and we're going to be tapping those resources next year. Jess actually is a, she's a trained pastry chef. And, and then also Guy is a, has been, was a chef for, I think, 25 years before entering the world of law enforcement. So, or 20 years, 20, I'm sorry, 20 years. And so, so we're going to definitely be tapping those resources down the road and, and have them help. So we're, we're hoping to maybe take that to another level next year. So, and then just real quick, just some upcoming initiatives. This was another thing that we, we talked a lot about out east, is about crisis planning with, with partners and specifically the school district here. And Superintendent Kelly touched on this a little bit with some of the, some of the pandemic, pandemic planning and some of the COVID-19 planning that we're working with. You know, we're pretty lucky that we've got Chief Thompson, our new fire chief with Columbia Heights. He's got a pretty deep background on, on this type of work. And so we're definitely going to be leveraging that talent and, and really continue to work with the school district on, on some of these, some of this crisis planning and training in, in all areas. So, and then like I said, going back to like the cooking with a cop example, we're going to continue to look at some ongoing opportunities to continue our partnership with the school district. And I, I love it when we get those things from within the school, where the kids come up with some different ideas. We got a couple of ideas that are kind of in the hopper right now. We're trying to figure out a way to make it work for the following year. We just have to see, you know, we get to the point where we got to make sure that we have the bodies to make some of this happen. So, we just, and we also have to be also mindful of, of some of the, some of the restraints because of, you know, teachers still have to teach. And so we can't really take that away either, as much as we'd kind of like to once in a while. So, so anyways, so some other new initiatives that I think it's important to note, because this is, this is something I think will have an indirect impact with the school district. This is something that we've been working on for over a year now and we're finally starting to get this up and running. So, the county attorney's office is actually going to be coming down to the Circle Terrace Community Center at Noraki Park coming in May. And they, we've been working with them for a while to, to work on some upcoming listening sessions, to talk about some community issues and also understanding of the court process. You know, one of the things that, that we talk a lot about with our, with our, with our folks and our citizens from different multicultural communities is the police side of things. And that's, that's a, that's a big part, obviously, because, you know, we're the most visible part of the criminal justice system, but we're only a small part. And the county attorney's office is, is, is an area that, well, quite frankly, I haven't done this for a while and sometimes it's, it's still a little bit of a mystery from time to time. So to actually have them come down and, and take some time out of their schedules and come down and work with, with folks from different communities, I think that's fantastic. And I got to, I just have to give a shout out to the county attorney, Tony Palumbo, for being willing to, to, to do that. So, and I'm just glad now, coming up in May, that we're able to make that happen. So, if you folks are around, I don't know, I think Kristen probably, you're probably aware of this, I'm guessing. So, if not, you're more than welcome to attend. So, I think, we're hoping for good turnouts those nights. So, if you want, I can, I'll send you those dates as well. So, and then lastly, this is, I have to throw this out there because one of the things that we've seen over the last several years is the change in technology. Technology continues to change at an exponential rate. Our city manager was at some training here recently and, and this topic of technology and city government was talked about. And the person who was talking about it at that time said, as fast as, as fast as technology is, is changing right now, it is actually the slowest that you're going to see the change happen. It's going to continue to change exponential, at an exponential rate. And so, at the end of the day, you know, when it comes to things like law enforcement and that, you know, we have to continue to make sure that, you know, we look at technology through the lens that, you know, is it really helping us fulfill our mission, our mission of public safety? And, and if it, if it is, great, but we just have to make sure that, you know, technology isn't pointing us in a direction that we don't want to go. And so, we had a lot of discussion, discussion about this well over a year ago. And we took this past year and did a lot of research on, on UAVs and, and drones in general. And what we did come up with is we found that if we're going to do this, what we really want to do is we want to incorporate other departments within the city into this program. So, because of that, we actually worked with the Public Works Department and also the Fire Department. And we actually received authorization to purchase the, the UAV last night. And so that will be happening here in the very near future. And, and really, this will, this is going to be something that's really, I think, going to be a game changer for law enforcement. We've seen it in Anoka County. There are a couple of departments within Anoka County that already have them. And it's, they've been very helpful in, in things such as suspect searches and, and also in search and rescue situations. The Fire, the Fire Department also is pretty excited to have this opportunity as well from an emergency management's perspective as also, as well as with fire scene management. And then lastly, it was interesting in, in talking with our Public Works Director, it was really interesting to see how much use they're going to be getting out of it, just on the Public Works side. In fact, I would not be surprised if Public Works becomes the one department that uses this, this, this UAV the most, just based on some of the things that they need to do and, and some of the hours that they're going to save because they're going to have access to a UAV. So, we're hoping on the police side to have our policies and everything in place and, and operational by June. So that's, that's kind of our goal right now. A lot of it depends on, on ordering of these, of this equipment. Like I said, it's, compared to even a year ago, the number of agencies that have UAVs now is really increased. So, there's a little bit of a shortage there right now. So we're hoping that we can get everything and, and get everyone trained up and FAA certified and so forth by, by June so that we can start taking advantage of this, this technology. So with that, that's all I have for you folks tonight. And just in closing, just again, thank you folks for your continued partnership. You know, I've been, I've been here a while and, and I got to tell you, like I said, it's, it's been, this is truly one of the highlights of my career is working with the folks in the school district and, and just working with the, the kids in the school in general. It's, you know, it really is an enjoyable part of the work that we do on the, on the police side of things. So thank you very much.
You mind if I open it up to questions?
Sure.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, you're up.
Are you sure?
Probably same thing.
Probably the same thing. As a longtime resident and parent of high school students and graduates, cannot thank you enough for your leadership. I know that the board before us really did a lot of establishing these partnerships and also leadership before. But what you guys are doing is so valuable. I work in social services and used to be in juvenile corrections and it's just not replicated.
God bless you.
It's not like this in a lot of communities. It's unique. And I know it's a lot of effort for those officers if they, you know, finish a shift and then come and take time with teenagers, can be draining, but kudos to all of them that do it. And thank you, we can't underestimate the value of it.
Thank you. It certainly helps keep us all grounded, that's for sure. So thank, thank you for that.
I would echo what Molly said. And I mean, I've had an opportunity to, to witness what you guys do from a different perspective as well when I was actually with the Fire Department. So, it, it does make a difference when you're out there. And you mentioned it, you talked about, they don't see you as a cop when you walk in the door. When I was on the street, I would see, there'd be a group of teenagers, you know, where normally go, oh God, whatever. And when one of your officers walk up and they'd say, hey, call them by name or whatever just because of your basketball mentor program or whatever it was, and just, they're not afraid of the police or not as afraid or more, hopefully more respectful or more. But it, it is making a difference and it is a lot of work. And I know that, you know, it is, you're asking a lot of your officers and of you as yourself, but make sure they know that it's making a difference. So, it's important.
Thanks, John. And, and we do, I, I really do try to send that message home because the officers, you know, and I, and I do think over time, it's changed us as individuals as well. And so I think, like I said, I think we probably get more out of it than, than anyone, so.
And I do want to publicly put out there one more time, I'm happy to be an emergency operator of your drones and time of need.
Oh my gosh. Do not give him access to your drone.
We'll put you on, we'll put you on the list. Probably for the fire side, there might be a lot of new policies on the police side that you might have trouble with, so.
Guidelines, Lenny.
I'll, I'll interject so John stops talking about your drone. But I, I also want to comment, you talk about perception. And I think, you know, and I do think we're all getting something out of this partnership and especially our kids. And, and even as Molly said, as a parent, you know, when I drive by the school, I think in, in some communities, a parent might drive by the school and see a police car out front and their immediate thought is, oh no, what's happening? I drive by the school every day and there's police cars out front and I know that it's because police officers are playing basketball with the kids or that they're involved in our schools or that they're present at our basketball games in a way that they're just interacting in a positive way with our students. I don't think I've ever driven by the, the, the school and seen a police car out front and had that panic because it's just, I know what, what you're doing there and it is so important. And so many kids who might not have other options to, to do something productive after school or before school have an opportunity because of the time that you guys are putting in and, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. And, and you know, and, and like I said, it's, it's, you know, we, we try to do things right and, and we, we do revisit everything that we do. And, and every now and then, we do have our bad days. There's no question, we're, we're all human. But when it comes to this type of work, this is something we will be continuing, you know, and, and as we, as times change, we'll continue to change with it and, and continue to work together on, on these things. So, again, thank you very much, folks. And Superintendent Kelly, thank you for all your time. Thank you very much.
I did one other thing, just really quick, not for you.
Yes.
If, I think it's important for the city council to understand that we appreciate the latitude you're given to try all these different things and stuff like that, that the board recognizes your effort and, you know, maybe kind of you could pass that on to your board or to your council that allowing them to do the things that they think makes sense without a lot of micromanagement, I think, has, has been a huge key to the success here, so.
An incredible partnership.
Yep.
Absolutely. Laura, you have something?
I, I, I want to echo what everybody else is saying, just how much we appreciate this partnership. And, and like you said, that's a partial list. There was at least another 10 items on there, you know, teaching classes, reading with the kids. I'm just, it's, it's really, really good to, to be able to have, the students to have more access to good role models as well. You know, they have their parents and they have their teachers and then the, the city and the police department. Being able to have all those good positive role models is so incredibly important and perhaps they might consider something in law enforcement as well. So I'm, I, do you have, you have a junior police officer type of stuff?
Well, we, we do have a reserve program. We used to have an explorer program, but we, we don't, we don't have that right now. But you're right, recruitment and retention, that, that, that is huge. And, and that is something that's always in the back of our mind when we're, especially when we're talking to students in the high school when they're thinking about different careers. And we do have a, currently a Heights grad who's working for us right now. And, and he's, he's just finishing up in Mankato State and I've known him for, I think he was a freshman or sophomore in high school when I first met him. And to see his growth and development, he is going to land on his feet at a police department somewhere. I just hope that when that time comes that we're in a position to, to make that happen in Columbia Heights. He's going to be a good one.
That's exciting. That's exciting.
That's what we hope for with teacher retention. So it's pretty incredible. We hope to get students back.
Yeah.
So I've heard. Word on the street, HR. We get a nod from HR, we hope for that. Superintendent Kelly, sorry to keep you, you're just popular guy.
I was going to say, thank you for the kind words and I really will miss you. And in July, when I'm at the farm rocking on the porch or the rocking chair, I'll be thinking about you. But all kidding aside, I know that you said multiple times, we probably get more out of this, meaning the police department, than, than the schools. But actually, I, I go to bed and I rest easily because I know that the police and the fire in this, in this community really are there to support us. And it gets to the point where the, the SROs, the school resource officers feel like they're part of our family. And we get to know their children and just about when one of us leaves and we think, what are we going to do without, one of them leaves and we think, what are we going to do? The next one comes in, they've all been amazing. And in addition to that, the help with investigations and crisis management. When you talk about partnerships like that, they're invaluable. And they're the things that you don't really see all the time, but you know that if you pick up the phone and you call, somebody is there with an immediate response and really good leadership to help you through crises. So thank you for that as well. And it's been a pleasure working with you as the chief and before.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you very much for the kind words.
Yeah. And I'd echo that, I'll, I'll keep it short, but even just that my kids know JP. You know, like, it's, it's incredible. I don't, I think all the kids know him and that's just a great link to have, to seeing someone in a uniform and maybe hopefully that rubs off some of the maybe layers of intimidation that could cause them from feeling like that police officers are valuable resources. So, and we know they are. So it's, it's great that we can have that role with the kids and appreciate it as a community member. So, thank you so much. And thanks for coming tonight, taking your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. It was great. And, and you know, whenever you need anything or you'd like me to stop back, I'd be more than happy to come, come by, that's, that's for sure. It's the least I can do, so thank you very much.
Thanks again.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, we're a lot of fun.
Yeah, we are. And to prove it, I would like to welcome up Brian Hennickens to talk about roof bids. Wo-ho! Brian, make us look good. Come on, man.
Doesn't get much more exciting than this.
Think it's rolling, Lenny.
All right. I'm sure I'm getting the right one up here. All right. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I have an information item to talk about North Park Elementary roof bids. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Focusing on excellence, be our best, collaboration, work together and integrity, doing what's right. Again, this is an informational item, there's no board governance tonight, or action tonight, but this will come to the board as an action item for approval at the March 24th School Board Meeting. And I, I brought this to the school board as an action item for bid authorization, so to put bids out on the street on January 28th. And then we had our bid opening on March 6th. So just recently, this last Friday at 2:00 PM in the Family Center here. And before I go into the results, again, I just want a quick review. This is a roof aerial of North Park Elementary. You can see on the right side, the sections of roof, the solar panels on them, that's the new sections of roof that we did this past summer. And then all of the remaining five sections to the right. Those sections of roof range from late 80s to early 90, early, well, mid 90s, 95 roofs. The section in the middle, you can see how it's darkening much more than the rest of the sections, this is because there's poor drainage, and the water really pools in those sections of roof. So, with that construction project, we really wanted to move forward with doing the rest of the roof at North Park Elementary, so it was something that we didn't have to worry about in the near future, and that building would really be very complete. So, those are the sections of roof that we'll be doing. So, bid results, we were happy with the bid results. In the red there, you can see Peterson Brothers Roofing, at $545,325. That was right in our estimate, as far as what the roof was going to cost, we will be using long-term facilities dollars on this roof. And Peterson Brothers Roofing is a company that we have worked with before, they do a lot of our roof repairs, actually, so they're onsite a lot. And I think they were a little put off by the fact that they weren't the low bid last time, I think they got a little bit more aggressive this time. So, we feel good about that, we feel good about the company, we work with the Garland Company, and they drew up the designs for the roof, and the spec for the bid, and so, and we have a recommendation letter that will be put in the board back at next time from them, recommending Peterson Brothers as the low bid moving forward. So, again, this will come to the board on the March 24th meeting, as an action item to approve this, and this would be June, starting June 2020, and we would move forward with that roof, and complete it by the start of the school year. Any questions?
I have one. Looking at the construction days, they're pretty significant, well, they're fairly significantly less than everybody else, and that's something that you're comfortable with. Now, these are just actual workdays, so these are not including any of the rain delays, weather days, that they're, that will inevitably be in there in June, so we can anticipate that this is going to just take two and a half weeks in June.
Right.
So, but you're comfortable that they'll be able to get it done in the timeframe that we have?
Yeah, and they have room in the front of their schedule, and I think that a lot of room in the front of their schedule, which helped them be more, or reason, another reason they were more aggressive with the bid. So, I think they really want to get it done in the beginning, and so that the rest of their summer is off somewhere else. So, I think they're front-loading a lot of workers on our site to do it.
Okay, great.
And they'll collaborate well with the construction, that will be pretty busy over there in other areas of the building, it won't compete?
Nope, it won't compete, we'll be able to have them access the roof from the front of the current, soon-to-be-old front entrance, so they'll access the roof from that section. And then our, the construction from inside is all really accessing it from down below, that's the construction zone, so we'll be able to separate them fairly easily.
Okay.
And then the existing roofs for the new additions are done, and there's temporary tie-ins to our existing roof, and they're well aware of what we have there, and we worked with Garland, actually, on creating those temporary tie-ins, knowing that we wanted to do this roof, and if prices came in good, that we would, so it's ready to go, so it makes it a lot easier for the company as well to complete the roof and tie-in to the new.
Thank you. Other questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to have Lori and talk to us about the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement, and we talked about this last week, but, the last time we met, sorry.
Yeah, I think we've talked about this a couple of times, both at the board table, and most recently at our work session. And as this board knows, and so kind of more for the public that may be watching at home, really took a focus a little over a year ago, and said, okay, how do we as a board look at our strategy on community engagement? We had our ad hoc Subcommittee on Community Engagement last year, and really focused on a couple of new ways that we could engage the community this year, and I think those have been very positive. You know, but then looking at saying, okay, how do we do this ongoing? And, you know, in our background information, you know, School Board Policy 213 permits the board to designate committees, that has to be done by resolution. And really looking at the MSBA as a background that says that the role of the school board is to represent our community through policy and community engagement. We have a Subcommittee on Policy, so it makes sense to have a Subcommittee on Community Engagement. It would be a standing Subcommittee, which is, shows that there is a very intentional part of this board, and hopefully then boards to follow, to say, we need to have community engagement strategy and evaluation as part of everything that we do. So, as you know, at our work session last time, we shared a draft of the Community Engagement Subcommittee Establishment Resolution, and added that and edited that, which was also in your packet, one of the comments was that, you know, that the resolution had included that the Subcommittee would meet on a regular basis, but we defined that further, to provide just accountability, moving forward for our board and boards to follow. And so, we did include that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement will meet four times annually, once each quarter, and report to the full school board at the regular school board meeting following the Subcommittee meeting. So that there's really a time and a definition for when that Subcommittee will then come back and report to the full board. And kind of above that, the whereas is, is that the committee would be formed, and that the members would be appointed, and that, you know, really it's focusing on the ongoing process of two-way communication between the school board and the community it serves, engaging in strategies to implement, and the timelines for implementation, community engagement, evaluation and assessment of the community engagement efforts, and then keeping track of the revenue and expenditures necessary to support community engagement. So, overall, you've got the resolution in front of you, again, with our added element of regular reporting and meeting times.
Go ahead, Lori, yeah, thanks.
I just had, just one follow, when we were talking about the once each quarter, does this, this policy as written ban when maybe certain initiatives are being taken into effect to be able to meet more regularly? If you wanted to do a couple of meetings prior, if you want to work on something more involved?
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't think, basically it says that the community engagement, that the Subcommittee will meet four times annually, so I would say that that means that the committee would meet four times annually, it doesn't say that it would meet
Only four times.
Only four times, or that it would meet up to four times, but I would say, it does define the four times, so I wouldn't say that maybe it doesn't say six times, or, like, if you wanted to include it so that the committee could meet more than four times, I think the language in this resolution would need to be changed, would be my.
If we want to meet more than four times?
Yep. So, it would say that the community, the Subcommittee on Community will meet at least four times annually, I think otherwise.
Minimum?
Minimum, once each quarter.
I think using the word minimum would be.
Yeah.
Are we okay?
That's the only, other than that, that's just all of a sudden occurred to me, that if you had some sort of an initiative, that it may be outside of the policy.
Okay.
Are people comfortable with that change?
Yeah.
We will vote on this at our next board meeting on the 24th, so we have a couple of weeks, but, any other, that's, thank you, Laura.
So, then, basically, just so I understand the corrections, that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement will meet.
At a minimum.
At a minimally, four times annually, once each quarter?
Sure, minimally, yeah.
Okay.
I know Superintendent Kelly gets a kick how much we argue about, not argue, we commentate, collaborate on grammar and word usage.
Commas.
Yes, and I thank her for her help on that, because she prevented me from doing this on-air, but now we're doing it on-air, so.
But, this is, I mean, it's important, it's important, and I, you know, I will say that as an advocate for this Subcommittee, I think community engagement is critical in what we do, and so, but I do, I thank you for your input on that, and I know we didn't talk after we added that language, and so this is our opportunity to do that, but it makes sense that if there's, if we're going to roll out initiative, there may be some additional, need to be some additional meetings.
Great, that's a great catch, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll keep going. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the city liaison role. If you keep going in your board packets, you'll see the updated version with all the correct spellings of council. Thank you for all of your grammar help. Nothing's changed since we last talked about it at our work session, just wondering, as we look at this, like Lori and said, we want to have an ongoing commitment to having good relationships with stakeholders in the community, and part of that is the liaison role to the city. We, a few weeks ago, put legs on one to the schools, and now we're hoping to do that with the city. And so, this kind of puts definition around, it gives some guidelines for how that role will work, and we've been talking about this for a while, so, wondering if anybody saw anything kind of like in the last discussion point, this that was in need of change, or didn't come out quite the way we talked about it. All right, we're good, we'll keep going on to action items. Welcome up Lindsay Bennett from Human Resources to talk to us about seniority lists.
Can I just back up real quick?
Yep, sorry.
It's okay, just to reiterate, that that will also be on our next meeting's agenda for, as an action item.
As an action item.
So, both of those items, okay, thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Annually, we have to post the teacher's seniority list and the early childhood family education seniority list, that's per the contract. So, I just am here tonight to let you know, we did post them for the 30 days that we have to. Any questions that came up were answered, so tonight I'm here seeking approval about the teacher's seniority list and the early childhood family education seniority list.
All right, can we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lori, second?
Second.
Molly? All right, any questions for Lindsay, comments?
So, just to reiterate, this has already gone through the teachers, they've had the opportunity to look at it, make any corrections, so this is past the window of time to make those changes.
Yes.
All right, any further questions? All right, the motion to approve the teacher and ECFE seniority list, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteained? Motion carries. All right, on to the seniority list approval, for the other groups, correct?
Yep, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So, in the board packet, there's the seniority list, it's for education assistants, lunch duty monitors, clerical, custodial, and food service. So, again, per their contracts, we have to post their seniority list, so it's sent out to the members of that unit and their union stewards, and then they're given 30 days to ask any questions, that 30 days has come and gone, and any questions that did arise were answered and handled, so in the packet is the final copies for approval.
All right, a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
John, second?
Second.
Laura? We'll give that one to Laura. All right, any discussions? Discussions, plural. And similarly, any objections raised were handled, okay? Anything else? All right, on the motion to approve the seniority list for the custodians, clerical, food service, education assistants, and lunch duty monitors, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. Welcome up Xena Stenvik to talk about achievement and integration plan and budget.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Recently, the board was presented with information on the Achievement and Integration three-year plan, and then annual budget. So, as part of the three-year plan, there are three required goals. One focuses on academics and college and career readiness, the other focuses on access to equitable, or equitable access to culturally relevant and effective instruction, and so the strategies are focused on professional development for staff. And the third is to increase integration, so that's with our partnership with St. Anthony, our neighboring district, that we do with our summer seminar program. So, those are the strategies. In order to develop this plan as required, the World's Best Workforce Committee was consulted, also the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, as required, was, had input, and then our District-wide Equity Team with representatives from across the district, schools, and departments, were also, gave input on the different strategies and goals. As part of the requirement, 80% of the funding is, must go to direct student support. As outlined and proposed, we'll actually have 89.5% going directly towards that student support. A combination of 20%, 20% can go to professional development and administrative costs, cannot exceed 10% for administrative costs. So, as you can see, as outlined, 2.25% would go towards professional development, there will be other professional development happening that we can blend and braid funds, and then 8.25% administrative costs. And within administrative costs, I wanted to note that that includes fees, and it also includes the indirect required costs. So, it's a small, it's a small amount there. So, with the incentive revenue and the regular achievement and integration revenue, you can see it's just over a million dollars that goes above and beyond the general fund to support our students. So, this evening, I'm here seeking action and approval for the three-year plan and budget.
All right, a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? All right, discussion, questions?
I have one question. For the administrative costs, I appreciate you breaking down that that also includes fees and indirect costs, but can you give an example of some of the just overall costs that would be in that line item?
In the administrative costs? We, one is funds a portion of the summer seminar administrator and coordination, a portion, a small portion, working with the liaisons, the district liaisons with family engagement. Other than that, it's fees and indirect costs, it's a very small portion, it's not any one whole FTE or salary.
Thank you. Excellent, other questions? All right, thanks for taking the time to prepare this. Let me find it, the board will be asked to approve achievement and integration plan and budget, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteained? Motion carries. Thanks, Xena. Everybody's favorite topic, high school bathrooms. Nobody had a bad experience in whatever. All right, let's make it better, Brian.
We'll make it better. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this evening, I'll talk about high school restrooms remodel and expansion, and I'll just go through this really quick, just to kind of give you an idea of what I'm talking about before I ask for approval. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Core values, excellence, be our best, collaboration, working together, and integrity, do what is right. So, this is an action item this evening, giving administration authorization to post for bid for the remodel and expansion of some restrooms at Columbia Heights High School. I'm just going to kind of show you a screenshot of a map to give you an idea exactly what I'm talking about, I think everybody probably knows, if I just start explaining it, but just for people that don't. So, this is the main entrance, high school main entrance right here, door one, coming in the lobby, right out here. And our beautiful bathrooms we're talking about this evening are, these are here, so these are bathrooms that, you know, have had some minor remodel, they have new, or they had 20-plus years ago, new doors to the stall, or single stall in those bathrooms, but they are the bathrooms for our entire gymnasium, event space, PAC event space, and then the whole corridor going down the art space. And they're very undersized, and for the most part, many parts of them are original to the building. So, we are looking at, and we haven't really started in any of our buildings with any kind of major bathrooms renovations since our buildings were built, they've had minor renovations, but nothing major. So, we're starting here because we really need to get these things up to code, as far as the number of stalls that are available for these event spaces, and obviously, they need a lot of work. So, we'll be expanding into that classroom next door, 135, and taking a large portion of that space to get our numbers up. Right now, we most likely will have six sinks and 10 stalls in each bathroom, so it's a girls' and a boys' bathroom, so it will be sufficient for those large venue spaces. So, you know, as we've created, you know, an additional large performance space.
So, you know, as we've created, you know, an additional large performance space in that gymnasium, and not to mention the basketball games and things that will be able to happen in there again. And then that Performing Arts Center will really be able to provide proper facilities for those. So this evening, seeking authorization to publish for bid for those projects. This is a long-term facilities maintenance project. Again, right now, we're just giving authorization to publish for bid. And then, just like with the roof bid earlier, I'll bring it to you, the board, as an information item. And after that information item, depending how bids go, we'll seek approval.
All right, motion to carry that forward?
So moved.
Second, I'm going to go to John, and then I'll get Laura. Oh, you want to, John and Laura? All right, any questions, discussion? Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I actually do have one question. When we're looking at taking some space from that classroom, as far as, is there going to be enough room in that classroom for the class that is there?
Good question. It's, right now, it's just over 1,500 square foot space. The agricultural specialist lives in that classroom right now. Works within that space right now. And currently, we are, we are definitely going to consume a lot of that space. It will leave, I think, about a 500 square foot space. And it will be sufficient for certain things within the classroom, but it will not be sufficient for bringing an entire class of kids into that classroom. Now, currently, his main classroom, of course, is outside in the schoolyard, edible garden. And he has portable equipment to bring out to the classroom. So we will be working very closely with Kristen and her team on making sure that for the next school year, he has sufficient space and moving forward. And we're definitely looking at the broader picture of that area and what we're going to do moving forward. We just can't tackle it all in one year. So there is, there's more that we'll have to do in that area. And so there'll be more conversation about that in the future. Right now, we have to start with what, you know, getting our bathrooms up to code, expanding them, and upgrading them.
We're looking at ADA compliance as well as?
Yes. And we will have to add openers to both those bathroom doors. So they are ADA compliant, that is one thing that they're lacking right now. Lorian, you have another question?
Well, it needs to be done. I just was wondering, we've got such a space at a premium over there that who's in the classroom, like, well, are we going to turn it into office space? Because it's going to be quite a bit smaller.
Yeah, probably.
Believe it or not, my question was identical to Laura's question, so.
Perfect.
I'm impressed.
You're rubbing off on us, thank you. All right, anything else?
Madam Chair, just going to say one additional thing. Once the bathrooms are reestablished and are bigger, we will not have to leave the whole school open. And so it'll make everything more safe and secure. And people might not have to miss the second act of the play or the concert because they're standing in line as well, so.
I think it's a good, good idea. All right, motion to call for bids for the high school restrooms, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right, we have board policies and their second reading. I will, is it okay if I spare the reading of all the numbers there? Or is it appropriate that I read all of them?
Read them all.
All right, here we go. Board policy, second reading on 511 fundraising, 535 service animals in schools and the form, 603 curriculum development, 611 homeschooling, 613 graduation requirements, 615 test accommodations, modifications and exemptions for IEP. Section 504 accommodations and LEP students. 616 systems accountability, 618 assessment of student achievement, 620 credits for learning, 624 online learning options, 703 annual audit, 705 investments, 709 student transportation safety policy, 713 student activities, 720 vending machines, 721 federal uniform grant guidance, 902 use of school facilities and equipment. These are policies did appear on the February 7th, or February 11th meeting, excuse me, for review. And we're asking for approval for those tonight. These went through the Subcommittee a while ago, in early February, and then here we are today. Superintendent Kelly, or, so could I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Thanks, Molly.
Second.
Lorian, Superintendent Kelly, did we have any questions or comments from anyone on these?
Madam Chair, we have not.
All right, any other comments or concerns that people have heard? All right, other discussion? All right, on those, all of those policies, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries. Great, that moves us on to board topics. Anybody have any board topics, upcoming events, different things that are going on?
Just one comment, I want to thank Councilmember Biscens for coming as our liaison from the city to the school board. So I appreciate you sticking it out with us at this meeting today, so thanks for coming.
Something's going on Friday.
Fine Arts Night has been rescheduled for April 3rd.
Okay.
Yep.
Nothing's going on this Friday.
Yes, it has. We'll do the ribbon cutting first, I think, right? And then we'll do the Fine Arts Night, so.
And Fine Arts Night is going to be amazing, by the way. So just kind of a teaser, there is a Latin theme of the performance and the food that will be served. And they will be selling roses from Ecuador sourced by one of our parents. So it'll be a complete Latin-themed fun evening for all.
So dress appropriately?
Dress appropriately. I would like you to, yep, absolutely.
Our hoodies Latin-themed.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Laura. April 3rd, put it in your calendar.
Starting at 5:30.
You are invited. Anybody else? Themes, topics?
Can I also mention with the Performing Arts Night, there'll be 190 students that will be performing.
Wow.
190 students from 5th through 12th grade will be performing. I just got the counts yesterday.
That's excellent, and more details to come.
More details to come.
All right, great, keep it tuned in.
Highland's got something going on tomorrow night. Let's see what it was for the Highland students. Thursday night is...
Was it their book bash on?
Yeah, it is their book bash, yes, it is.
Highland Book Bash and Book Fair. Yes, tomorrow night, that's from 6:00 to 7:30 at Highland.
And you can do like a book trade, is that kind of the idea, come in and, is that what I heard?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, it used to be their ice cream for books, and now it's the book bash.
Book bash, yeah, come in. Kids have opportunities to have access to books to bring home. All right, if there's nothing else, all right, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:20 PM.